Our last meeting, regular meeting of the year. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues here this evening. Eric Fong, Gina Steiner, Marwan Cameron, and Eric Sisney. And we'll get started. Eric, would you like to read the mission statement?
Sure. Inspiring our community to dream more, learn more, do more, and be more.
I made a note here because I think that's the last time we're going to read that mission statement if we approve the strategic plan later this evening. So, a moment, a moment of pause for that. It's been a good mission statement. Jason, would you like to do welcome and introductions, please?
I will. Good evening. Welcome to the last board meeting of the year. And so we've got a lighter team tonight just because of the holidays. From left to right, my left to right, Deputy Director of Public Services Shannon Peterson, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, our Deputy Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Baer, and then we have the Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, and last but certainly not least, our Director of Facilities and IT, Mike Rose. And we do have a very special guest that I'm going to let Ms. Peterson introduce.
Okay. I'm very excited. Branch Manager of Downtown Bremerton, Lisa LeChuca. Downtown Bremerton and Public Services Support Team. Lisa LeChuca is with us tonight. She's put together a wonderful presentation about the history of our Downtown Bremerton location and the evolution over the last, I don't know however many years, but I'm very excited to have Lisa join us this evening.
Good. We'll, we'll hear from Lisa in a moment, so we're excited to hear about that as well. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? No? With that, we'll move to public comment. Per the Public Engagement Board policy, this time is designated for all residents of Kitsap County to present public comments. The public comment time is set aside for the board to be able to listen to feedback from the community without discussion or debate with the speakers. Speakers are asked to follow the Public Comment Board guidelines, which provides instructions and limitations to, to public comment that includes anonymous comments, forwarding emails of others' remarks, and we don't hear comments pertaining to personnel issues. We do have an individual who joined us this evening. Her name is Mary Ann Confar, who would like to speak to the board. We'll have you go ahead and...
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Confar. I am a librarian. I'm a librarian at Olympic College. I became a librarian after five years working with the Gates Foundation as a public access computer trainer, setting up computers in over 500 libraries across this country. And I really developed a commitment to what a library can do when it has good computers and it has Internet access. And I've worked in some libraries that would fit behind the desk here, little wee ones. But anyway, I have been working at Olympic College in the library there since 2009, and I have some things that I would love to partner, I would love to see Olympic College partner with the public library. And this is completely unofficial. I'm not speaking on behalf of the library. But when I sit behind the reference desk, I see people at the community college who can't read. I had a wonderful student come up to me after I did a library orientation a couple of years ago. He was in an English 99 class, so that was high school English, getting him ready to take college English. And he came up to me and he said, you know, I was born in Hawaii on the backside of the main island, and I grew up in a little town that didn't have very good schools. And when I was in middle school, my parents moved to the mainland, and so I fell even further behind. And I'm finding, even in this English 99 class, that I'm having trouble reading. This young man was very well spoken, but he couldn't read. And I see people like that all the time. And I immediately started looking for literacy programs. When I was a kid, back in the day, and you wanted to learn how to read, you went to the public library. That was the place where you could take reading classes. The only literacy classes that I could find online out in the community was a very poorly maintained webpage that was really directed at people for whom English was a second language, immigrants. Nothing for people like this young man, so well spoken, but unable to read. So I want to plant the idea in the back of your minds that maybe we could bring literacy training back to the public library. Something else that I'm particularly interested in, I've been teaching basic technology classes, how to click a mouse without cutting yourself, ever since I left the Gates Foundation. And I'm lucky enough to be able to use the Henninger Room two days a month to do in-person classes, but I would really like to have more time. Give me a room. I have donated computers from Kitsap Computing Seniors that I can teach with, and I would dearly love to be able to offer very, very basic computer classes to the community, but it needs to be in a consistent time and place, particularly my older students. They have trouble remembering that the in-person classes are the second and fourth Thursday, and the first, third, and fifth Thursdays are on Zoom. So those are the two things that I'm most interested in, that I would like to plant in the back of your minds.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. And I know you got a chance earlier to meet Shannon, and, and as I mentioned, we do take the, the planting of seeds and take it up for conversation later, and we'll circle back on the issue. To that point, last month, we also had public comment from two individuals, one who came in person, one who submitted in writing, related to the use or, or the lack of access because of hours at, at Palms Bow, the community room. And we just want to make note here that while we didn't take up that discussion in the middle of the board meeting, as we don't, that we are looking into the issue because it gives us an opportunity to look at it in context, and, and we'll follow up. So we want to thank you for making the trip and joining us this evening, and for planting the seeds about how the library might better serve the community. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. This, they really are routine this time around. We have the minutes from the November 28th regular board meeting last month. We have the minutes of our December 8th board retreat. We have the payment of the November 20, 23 bills, including payroll and benefits, and the blanket voucher bills, and the withdrawal of library materials from the collection that's being declared a surplus for November, which includes 4,064 items. Are there any of these items that people would like pulled off the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I'll take a motion. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. Thank you. Now, Lisa, we will, we're looking forward to hearing your presentation regarding the history of the Downtown Bremerton branch.
Thank you, Stephanie. Greetings, Library Board and Leadership Team. I'm glad to be here today. Thank you for your service, and hopefully this will be a celebration of the reopening of the Downtown Bremerton location last week. I'm glad to speak about that at the end of the year. So check out the slideshow. It was built with research using the library's microfilm collection, from photos from the Kitsap History Museum, and from our archival files that Tammy and our Autumn take care of so well. So thanks, everybody, for contributing to this. And it's a welcome to Downtown Bremerton. So if you can see, in 1908, the Bremerton Library opened. It was above the fire stations, horse stables. Bremerton outgrew the space, and there were complaints about the smell. So the city, the mills sold some property to the library, and the library moved into an old church. It's in the same location that the library is now. And a couple decades later, we outgrew the library again. And in 1937, the city of Bremerton went out for a bond to build a new library to support the community. It was supported with Works Progress Administration funding, and the voters voted yes. And so you can see the building of the new library. And what's interesting, if you don't know about Works Progress Administration, it was a New Deal program that was created to make jobs and to support the community. And there were lots of criticism about that. So it could be that, some of the criticisms were that the workers were not paid well enough. Some of the criticism is the workers were not skilled enough, but you can tell, if you've seen the Downtown Bremerton Library, that it created jobs, and it made a beautiful building, and it's still there. And so here's another construction picture of the library. Also, there are not very many Works Progress Administration buildings in Bainbridge. So we have a couple. There's a, I think, a cabin on Bainbridge and near the Hood Canal, the Memorial Park. That's also a Works Progress Administration building. There isn't a library that is a Work Progress Administration building, except for the one in Downtown Bremerton in Kitsap. So it's pretty cool. It's very unique. If you haven't seen it, it's a very beautiful 1938 Art Deco building. So in 1938, we opened our doors, and we coordinated eight other small branches, I believe in Bremerton, but I'm not, it's ugly sure. And in 1955, all of the libraries in Kitsap combined to make one regional system, and the Downtown Bremerton Library became the main administrative center of that system. In 1978, we passed our last library bond, which was for the Sylvan Way Library Building, and that became our main administrative center. And the Downtown Bremerton Branch became known as what is like a smaller library location. I'm jumping ahead a lot of decades, not because I want to, but because like there are gaps in history, and we're focused on one particular moment in history that is relevant tonight. So in 1997, the NAACP President Deborah Jackson asked that the library building be renamed after Martin Luther King Jr. And the mayor and the library board unanimously agreed. And at the time, if you can recall, like in the late 80s, that's when the MLK holiday became a federal holiday, and they started renaming buildings and streets. And there was a Reverend of a church, who I'll get to in a moment, and he really advocated for more activities, more celebration around MLK. He had moved at a time in the early 90s when there weren't, weren't any celebrations. And six years later, they had a robust celebration at the Kitsap County Fairgrounds, and then they wanted to honor his legacy by renaming this building and making the library the first building named after King in Kitsap. And it passed. And so you can see there's a news article here of a little girl in the library, and we renamed the building. And here is a library dedication program, courtesy of the library's archives. And even though you can't read the small print, it was a big achievement. They had a very lovely ceremony, and it was a good celebration. Oops, I'm going to back up a bit. So the library, there is some confusion, and you'll see in a few slides. A lot of people know us as the MLK Library already. We are named by locations. We're the Downtown Bremerton Library, but the building, which is owned by the city, has dedicated the building to MLK. But many people just know us as the MLK Library. Continued investment in the building happened. It was interesting, like in the early 2000s, there were lots of ideas about what to do with Downtown Bremerton. So after the renaming of the building and dedication, then there was talk of a new government building, which is the building we're standing and sitting in right now. And in those initial plans, there were plans to have the library here, and to move the library out of that older building. There was also ideas to sell that building to the architecture firm, Rice Ferguson Miller. And none of that ended up panning out, and what happened was instead, the community, the county, the city, the library, and we got some funds from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and we reinvested in the building. And we remodeled it, we've kept some history to it, and this is a picture from that time. There is also another program, and I have to, these are fun to share, like these I found in the library. So it was a $400,000 investment. The library was closed for about seven months. Things that I know in here, especially in the program, are that they were proudly promoting their eight public computers and Wi-Fi access, and they had a new main floor bathroom, which we all know is really important. Thank you, Mike. Is that better? But it used to be the Literacy Council, and then for a few years, it was just storage, and you can see that in the upper photo. In 2020, we moved the Public Services Support Team downstairs, and courtesy of the library's facilities, they refreshed a little bit down there. If you don't know what the Public Services Support Team does, they distribute and warehouse all of the programming materials in the library. They also manage our community learning internship program, so we often have interns working downstairs and upstairs at the Downtown Bremerton Library location. And we have a meeting space down there too, as well. And going back a little bit, in 2019, as a result of the library's 2017 levy passage, we were able to refresh the upstairs public part of the Downtown Bremerton Library. We got new carpet furnishing, shelving, just another symbol of the investment that was made to sustain this library and its service. And this is the building today. So the city of Bremerton, who are wonderful partners, maintain the building and the grounds, and the Kitsap Regional Library provides all the services, the staff and the materials inside. And if you can see in this picture, there's a plaque dedicated to the, to Martin Luther King Jr. We used to have a yard, a wooden yard sign that just couldn't make it through our winters, and so we have a plaque there, and I point that out. And what is really special about this library, you know, is that I would say, working at many branches in the Kitsap Regional Library, it is our most diverse patronage. So we have people from Norm Dick's, from Kitsap Public Health, from city government, from county government, the military. We have families. We have a lot of unsheltered folks that come to the library, and they all manage to get along fairly well in this very small and beautiful space. And I believe that is because of our team. And so these pictures, which are fun, because our team is fun, they are our team from this year, including our interns and a couple of staff members that have moved on to other locations or library systems. I can say that with true sincerity, they are the kindest people to everyone that walks into that door. That isn't something that I brought to them, it is something that I learned from them. They're quite amazing, and expect to be treated with respect and kindness when you come into that branch, despite your circumstance. So, we're going to celebrate in January. The city invested another 400-plus thousand in our heating and cooling system. It is nice and toasty right now. It feels so good. We are also celebrating the 25th anniversary of the renaming of the building. And on Friday, January 12th, if all things align, including the weather, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, we will have a party to celebrate all of this. And I show this picture on the slide because you can see the old church building, which was after the horse stable situation, but you can also see the MLK sign, which is why I think people really identify us as the Martin Luther King Jr. Library. That's how they know us. And how proud are we, like to start with a Works Progress Administration program to create jobs, and then to carry on the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. It all happens at this building. It is hanging on there. It is like a gem on Fifth Street in Downtown Bremerton, and I hope we preserve it. There's a lot of appreciation. That's all we got last week when we reopened. And our substitute, Laura Jordan, who works at all of our library locations, she said to the team, "I think that here at Downtown Bremerton, they appreciate the library more than at other locations." And this might not be true in all cases, because all people love all of our libraries, but for some of the people, what the library provides here is a lot more than maybe people want from other libraries. It's a, it's a place to go to the bathroom. It's a place to charge your phones. It's a place to be and feel safe and to be accepted. And that, I think, is what she was trying to say to the team. And so I want to celebrate them, and celebrate the city, and celebrate every single service department in the Kitsap Regional Library, because we didn't do it alone. I can say we got a whole lot of hand-holding help from every single department, human services, foundation, public services, finance, like everybody really pulled through, but especially facilities, I didn't forget you, Mike, or your team. So thank you for keeping Downtown Bremerton alive, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for the name of this building. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa, or comments?
Can you hear me? Am I coming on in? Well, Lisa, you already know this is, this is my special library. I just want to say that you are an excellent steward and your staff of the Downtown Library, MLK Library. It is definitely warm and inviting. I got an opportunity to be there on Monday, and there was a gentleman, patron, that had come in. He was freshly from out of town, he's only been here for a few months, and just happened to come in and just talked about the importance of libraries overall, in his experience. And he was in the youth section, getting help in a different section from another library, and you would think they had known each other for, for months, and it was just the first day that they had a conversation. And it's just a testament to the service, and it's about the people. One other thing I would say is I really appreciate the historical pictures and the history. You know, many of us know Deborah Jackson here, and she continues to be a pillar in the community. The little girl in the picture, Tasia Green, was actually one of my students at Olympic College, and she is a leader in her own right. And so that is a testament to the legacy of that library, creating a space for youth to go on and become adults and, and become their best selves. So thank you for being a part of that.
Thanks, Marwan.
We moved to Kitsap County when I was 10 in 1950, and at that time, the Bremerton Library was the big library at Kitsap County. And my mother worked in the bookmobile, and so I remember the downstairs part, that was headquarters here for years, and the bookmobile worked out of there, believe it or not. So, anyway, I'm really glad to see the library renovated and, and continue on.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you for the, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for sharing. My, my main branch is Bainbridge, so I'm more on, on that side of the county, but I have stopped through, through Downtown Bremerton with, with my kids, and they were treated really well, and appreciate seeing all the history. It's wonderful to see the continuation of the spirit of maintaining a safe place for everybody and making sure that everybody's welcome. So thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Eric.
I just want to echo everyone's sentiments and say I wasn't being rude when I was looking down. I was making sure I had the date and time in my calendar, so. Wonderful presentation, thank you so much.
Thanks, Gina. Marwan and I are working on a really great mix for that evening, so put it on your calendar, everyone. It's going to be so good.
Yeah. Thank you, Lisa. I'm always, we're, we're, we're really blessed with the level and the quality of presentations that, that the staff present. Takes time to do these and to do them well, so we really, really appreciate it and look forward to coming to celebrate with you. Next item on the agenda, our board member reports. If anybody wants to jump in. I always love this part where we all look at one another, like who's going to go first.
I attended the board retreat on December 8th with the rest of you. It was nice that we had a, a full team there. And then I'll report out on our strategic planning meeting here shortly. Thanks.
Yeah, I also attended the retreat, and I thought it was a really good session. I really appreciated it. I learned quite a bit. Also, I'd like to mention, we finally finished our artwork at Manchester, and if you haven't seen at all, we've got a bunch of fish swimming across below the ceiling now. And, but anyway, there's a lot of artwork there for a small library. I think we put in a lot of, the community's put in a lot of effort. There's a big mural on the wall behind, the retaining wall behind, it's a really neat thing, and it's actually part of it, it's on the cover of the strategic planning thing. So, anyway, just wanted to mention that.
I also attended the board retreat, and I was excited to see that Bainbridge Island has a, has a new library branch manager. Had the pleasure of meeting Bert at Sylvan Way, seen him there several times, really like him, so glad to see, glad to see new branch manager there. Additionally, this year marks the end of my time with the, as president of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, so I'll be transitioning out as president, assuming that I commit to a peaceful transition. I haven't, haven't promised anything yet.
We have another job for you.
Yeah. But excited to, to continue with the foundation in my new role of, of bringing in new board members. So, yeah, lots of change.
'Tis the season, right? I was also at the board retreat- I was also at the board retreat, which was a great investment of time, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Jason and Jeannie and Tammy for making that happen. Gina, would you like to report out for the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee?
Sure, Stephanie. So, we talked about the downtown Bremerton renaming, so thanks again to Lisa for covering that and the reception date and time. And then we talked about the organizational goals for 2024, which I asked Jason to distinguish between organizational goals and strategic plan. And we talked about how this was some of the more direct staff operational efficiency goals. And so they're going to be focusing on internal customer service, so more streamlining of the systems that the staff use and to help make their jobs easier and more efficient. Some examples are like their maintenance requests and HR requests and signage that is needed. And overall, this will help with better public service. And supporting the foundation to raise capital for Port Orchard and then focusing on training and skill sets for the staff. So, you know, in 2023, the library worked on integrative systems and a new website, new catalog and stuff like that, really focused on external customer service, but so in 2024 we'll look at internal customer service. And then, of course, the strategic plan that we've been referring to for several months now and reviewing together. And if it's approved tonight, we'll be releasing that in January, early part of January 2024. And then we talked about Jason's review coming up and his goals, but that's a personal matter, so we'll be all doing that as a board and that's all I have. Did I miss anything, Marwan or Jason? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, would you like to give the financial report?
I'd love to give the financial report, there's not much to report on. I don't have anything new, there's lots of footnotes in there, everything is on target and glad to entertain questions if anybody has any questions on it.
Any questions for Dan? Love it when it's business as usual, which it is actually, we've said that every month since we've been here this year.
That's what I hope for.
That's what we like too, so thanks for that. Jason, library director's report.
Good evening again. So as you, it's all about the strategy tonight. After months of planning, our five-year strategic framework for the future has arrived, it's finally here. So you all have reviewed the plan, we've reviewed it with our staff, I'll talk about it much more later, but really I just wanted to give some overview on what that looks like. Our North Star will be fostering welcoming and belonging, it's sort of always what the library's been about and to build our collective impact and help the organization really thrive through financial unreadiness, social unrest, aging facilities, rapid technological advances. And so our strategic outline really, our strategic vision outlines that path forward. So I'm proud of the work of this entire team in this room, including our board, our staff and the entire organization for really helping shape what that vision is for the future. And so Jeannie's not here tonight, but I'll talk more later about the minute changes that we've seen from last month to this month. And then also, I'll share with the board our plans to onboard the entire organization in 2024 to launch our plan, pending final approval, of course. And so November was a busy month, like the preceding 10 months were, and so in November I had about two dozen community meetings, being keeping track of exactly how many meetings I've done since I've gotten here, I'll give a full out report on that. But the highlights of the month really included the Bremerton School District strategic planning process, I was honored to be invited with other community members to take part in helping the Bremerton School District really outline their vision for their school district. And then the other highlight was, as part of sitting in this room, it's Lisa, it's all about DB this month and we affectionately call downtown Bremerton DB. So, and just preparing for their reopening, as part of my, you know, quarterly support of managers, I like to keep in touch with what's happening in the facilities. And so I was able to go by and check on Lisa and her staff and in preparation to reopen on the 11th, so that was a highlight for the month and really checking in and sitting in on Lisa's huddle with her staff. And so, these community and staff connections, of course, since I arrived have helped shaped not only my view of what the community and staff look like, but also, you know, they really impart the information, it's helped me to impart information to stakeholders about the value of the public library as an institution, part of which we heard from our guest tonight. And so I'm even more convicted that the library as an institution has, you know, of course, significant and longstanding value for the community here in Kitsap. I know I'm preaching to the choir, you all know that, right? Ms. Convar knows that, we all know that, but that is always going to be the story for us, obviously, as we have more and more, you know, seemingly threats to our library existence. It's going to be really important to, you know, keep telling the story of how impactful the library is. So thank you, Lisa, for sharing those stories and Ms. Convar for sharing those stories about how impactful your role has been in helping, you know, people who use the library. And so, you know, for me, I am, of course, really convicted that the library institution has that value in Kitsap, despite which, you know, in these days seems to be sort of a dystopian existence, you know, just kind of ruminating on what libraries looked like when I first started using them when I was in grade school and kind of what society looks like now. You know, we're really at a place where we're fortunate that the library is still really valued here in Kitsap and is still used, you know, pretty immensely by the population here, so we want to keep that as such. And so this strategic plan, of course, helps to kind of outline that path forward, how do we stay relevant, how do we keep delivering that, those services to the public? And, you know, what that really means is that we have to, like the last iteration of this strategic plan, which, you know, was always strive to be adaptable and for us to be nimble, this one will, you know, give us the same sort of, you know, outline. And so for me, the goal for us is, and for me since I've gotten here, was to really get in touch with that community and, you know, I hope that we can be a model here in Kitsap. And we always have, from even like when I took this job, recognizing that Kitsap has been a library that's been really forward-thinking and has had some really innovative programs and services and so forth and so on, we really want to keep that alive in Kitsap. And so for us, we want to be a model for how to adapt in changing times for other libraries and we have just the staff to be able to do that, not only our, you know, frontline and behind-the-scenes staff, but this incredible leadership team. So, that's what makes this place in Kitsap so special, this library so special, and, you know, it's really our brilliant staff, we wouldn't be here without them. And so in November, we celebrated three of them, you know, what you get on a monthly basis in these reports and what we send out is that we, you know, we want staff to, as peers, recognize each other, that's, you know, has immense value when people can see their names, not only in the board reports, but in the messages about, you know, who's delivering great services. And we always like to say, who's ready to lift somebody up this month for exemplary service, both inside and outside the rooms? Fortunately, and I'm going to start with Lisa tonight, because we had three stars of the month, and I was hoping Lisa didn't leave because I want to embarrass her thoroughly. Thank you, Lisa, for staying. So we had three stars of the month and I'm going to go in reverse order. And Shannon, if you don't mind, I'm going to pick on you, because Shannon has a close relationship with Lisa in that Lisa's Shannon's direct report, but, you know, I don't like to really say direct reports, we are all colleagues here, including me and the leadership team, while on paper we have supervisor-supervisor relationships, I like to say we're all colleagues and we all support one another. So, I'm just going to give a blurb, but then I'm going to let Shannon, she can give more personal and warm stories. I have to read this, Shannon doesn't have to read it, she can just go off her memory. So, you know, Lisa is, really, she exemplifies what a leader is for me. And in coming here and seeing how she operates, Lisa really has developed her leadership chops here at Kitsap and she's proven herself to be a community connector, she thrives in creating spaces for equity. She's wrapping up a stint as a chair of the Kitsap Housing and Homelessness, Homeless Coalition, in which she invited me to one of their meetings, I don't know, six, seven months ago, and I got to see her in action there. And I think that community really supports her and they revere her. And, you know, Lisa, after months of being an admin and hanging out with us while DB was getting some, you know, cabling and HVAC upgrades, we had the pleasure of having her in that space and I got to learn a lot about that history you saw today. And she's really a catalyst, really, in moving this downtown Bremerton renaming project and getting it to where it needs to be. So I really want to thank Lisa. I'm going to turn it over to Shannon, she can give you a little more positive, or a little more, I think, personal feedback on Lisa. Shannon?
Thank you. You know, we've all been kind of living and breathing the strategic plan, the new strategic plan, and I was staring at that page with our new values, service, equity and curiosity, and it just struck me how much Lisa's work, particularly with the Housing and Homeless Coalition, has brought those values to life in all kinds of ways. This is a group that has a lot of direct service providers to the community and we're kind of the outsiders to that. Of course, we are a space for this population, but she really walked into that knowing that this is a huge community need and there are lots of relationships to be made and lots of action to happen in that space. And so she walked in with curiosity and just kind of getting to know the partners, getting to know what work was happening and, you know, over the course of a couple of years, became a leader in that space. And how cool is that for the library to say, like, we are here to support community and that doesn't mean that we are the ones actually providing the service, we can be the space and the facilitator of good conversations. And it's just been such a pleasure, I feel like every time I'm in a community meeting with Lisa, everyone's trying to hug her, everyone's trying to hang out with her. And it's just so amazing to see those relationships that she's made that are meaningful and real and have had impact with both our providers and the populations that they serve. So, I can celebrate a lot of things about Lisa, but seeing this work really come to fruition has just been a joy and a pleasure.
Thanks, Shannon. And you are a gem on Fifth Street, Lisa, just know that. Our last two stars of the month were Victoria Gingry, she's our marketing communications manager, who's really stepped up and filled a void in the department, chipping in it to provide some pretty nifty social media content. It's really energized a segment of our population base and I can't wait to see what comes next from Victoria and our marketing and communications team, she's been a really good addition to that team. Last but not least, another downtown Bremerton staff member, Gabby Davis, who's been a team player, helping out to fill in at several locations while downtown Bremerton was closed. Gabby helped out with several children's programs at Manchester and she typically goes above and beyond to offer help, shelf, do anything that would help the branches and that she's assisted during DB's closure. So thank you both, Victoria, Gabby and Lisa, for your well-deserved recognitions. Speaking of downtown Bremerton, you've heard that DB officially reopened their doors on the 11th after months of those HVAC and cabling upgrades and our beloved DB is back, serving the public. And the branch had held us off opening on the 11th where there was some light refreshment served and the eager, to the eager public that's been waiting for more than, what, five months to get back in. So it's good to see kind of visually what Shannon spoke to and really what Lisa spoke to about the warm reception that, even though when I went at night just to visit on my way home, there were still, you know, a few staff members in the building, but you can tell people are really grateful to be in that space with staff and staff really are, you know, it feels like a family sort of atmosphere, the family is the staff and the patrons, they know the staff by name and vice versa, and it really is a good place to be in. So thank you, Lisa, and the entire downtown Bremerton crew. In human resources news, hiring, obviously this time of year, hiring has slowed down a bit with the holidays approaching, but we welcomed a couple of new staff members in November. Caitlin Nicholas, who's our new content specialist in communications, and Meredith Joy, who's a library assistant at Port Orchard. And then in staff movement, we only really saw one change during the month and that's Charles Vois, another person who's joined downtown Bremerton, fortunately from Port Orchard, given that we've had a bit of staff movement with a couple of staff members from downtown Bremerton, one being promoted to another facility and another who took a job opportunity in another state. So it was very timely that Charles was able to get promoted to downtown Bremerton to be a library associate. So we're fortunate to have staff there and ready to reopen fully. Training has, activities slowed as well, I just had a couple of trainings throughout the month, the highlight of which was our leading others cohort, the second of which has been, it's really like a virtual instructor-led training where leaders actually learn how to become better leaders through highly interactive and structured courses over three days. And then we had two holidays in the month of November, Thanksgiving Day on Thursday, November 23rd, and Native American Heritage Day on Friday, November 24th. During those two days, all Kitsap Regional Library locations were closed. During the month, staff at all branches were able to hold food drives for their community food banks, staff placed donation boxes in their break rooms and other back areas. I'm thankful for the leadership of our branch staff who, you know, participate in endeavors like this every year and who are really community-focused, community-driven, so really want to thank staff for that. And that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Jason. We're going to let you just catch your breath for a quick second, only long enough to say that we have no correspondence. And we're going to move into old business and we've got you queued right up in terms of any sort of introduction you might like to give to the strategic plan.
Yeah, unfortunately Jeannie couldn't make it, so I'm going to do all of the presenting tonight. And you've seen the plan, again, I'm happy we're finally presenting our long-awaited five-year strategic vision for the organization and to the board tonight. And it's for the board, staff and community. And we put a lot of thought, a lot of hours, a lot of planning to really, this plan is about improving the lives of all the people around us, our staff, the community, that's what a library does, a library uplifts, it's the anchor of our community, it's a heartbeat of a community. So when we look at a plan like this, the reason it took so long, because it's important to have a plan that really exemplifies a mission of the library and what we want out of a library and we want it to do for the people who use the library. So, we plan to introduce the plan to our staff, pending approval, of course, and community throughout 2024, because a plan is nothing without its execution. And so, we will do that by training our managers and supervisors first, taking the plan on the road to engage all of our teams in onboarding and provide an opportunity for dialogue and to answer any questions. So I'm proud of the work the team has put into this process. And so in doing this, we got lots of input, which we've talked about before, but that input came from our community partners, our patrons, our staff, the board, of course, sitting here, our leadership. And so we're going to really address our commitment to our community through five strategic areas. And then on these five pillars, that will center everything we do, really, for the organization to better the lives, as I talked about, for everybody around us. So our strategic vision is what we're calling a framework for success for our library system. Again, we talked about all the challenges, so we felt like we needed a framework for how we're going to navigate those challenges, those that are, you know, seen and unseen. And so for us, our North Star is always going to be, again, fostering, welcoming and belonging and that's going to center on everything we do so we can build the collective impact. A lot of what we do involves partnerships, a lot of how we're able to, you know, and Ms. Convar, I'm glad you're here, she talked about partnerships, very timely, of course, because so much of how we touch the community, so much of how we've been successful in this day and age and how libraries have transformed is through building community partnerships. The queen of community partnerships, Lisa's in this room, is part of, like what she's done, she's maintained a database, I think, of community partners here for, you know, several years now. So part of what we are going to do is how do we build that collective impact by aligning with other institutions who are like-minded, who also sort of exemplify what that mission is and how we welcome and make people feel like they belong in the library and how we can help them to achieve whatever goals they have, you know, most salient of which is to, you know, obviously improve their literacy rates, but also just this wonder, this sense of curiosity that people have when they enter a library and it's all about this zest and sort of zeal for knowledge, and so we're really excited about that. So I'm thankful, I wanted to recognize a couple of people before we get into sort of the big reveal. And so, we hired a consultant, obviously, starting off, we felt like the team was really taxed in terms of projects. As Gina pointed out, last year's mission was all about really sort of, you know, figuring out our external services and communication and making sure that we were more visible in the community and we really wanted to, the biggest project we had last year was improving our digital space. And so we needed a new website for better accessibility to be able to, have people be able to find our resources more easily. And so with that, internally, we had a catalog switch- And so with that, internally, we had a catalog switch, too. So that ate up a huge chunk of time throughout the year, and we were able to have a consultant sort of drive that. And part of what we needed to do with the strategy is that a lot of work needed to be chunked out over the year. And so we also engaged a consultant, Eric Meade of Whole Mind Consulting. We're really grateful for Eric's work to get us to a point where we could turn it over to our internal director of strategy and communications, Jeanne Allen, who I think did a really beautiful job on finishing and sort of grabbing all those thoughts and producing this finished product. So I really want to thank both of them and then the entire marketing team, mostly, and it'll be Victoria, because Victoria came along very late and was able to translate all of this into really beautiful work. And so I'm proud of the marketing communications team for translating this vision into a beautiful layout. So the biggest reveal is that we're implementing this year a new mission, a new vision, and new values. So we thought it important, first of all, with, you know, a new director coming on and sort of having a new composition of this leadership team, we felt like we needed to, and certainly with coming out of COVID and changing times and sort of, you know, library needed to move in a slightly different direction. And we felt like while our focus of what we do for the public will never change, we felt like we needed a new mission, and we felt like our vision needed to be streamlined, too. We had, and we had a lot of values, quite frankly, and so they were numerous. And so we wanted to simplify it a little more so that people can identify with those values. And so for us, the new mission will be inspiring curiosity and connection. Shannon talked about it earlier. It's really simple. We wanted to keep the word inspire in that because we felt like the whole piece about people coming to the library is that they are inspired by something they see, something they read, something they hear. You take a kid, I took a telescope home the other month with my daughter because she was really intrigued with mapping out the stars. You know, we bought this house with a deck, and Jennifer kept talking about, hey, I want to be able to see the stars. And so I'm like, I think I can check out a telescope from the library. We were able to do that, but that really speaks to this sense of, like, curiosity. You want to learn something? What's the best way to do that? Go to a library, grab a book, or grab a, you know, we have a library of things, which is, you know, consists of kits, discover passes, ukuleles, you know, telescopes, things like that. So this whole sense of curiosity, equity obviously is important. We want for people to be able to, all people, to be able to have access to the library, not just people who have the resources, i.e. the, you know, resources to be able to travel to that library and people who know about it. How do we get out to people who don't understand what a library can do? How do we get out to people who have challenges getting to the library? How do we streamline services, or how do we adapt services so that they're accessible to everybody? So that's going to be really important. And then really just speaking to the service piece, the library is a service-minded organization. We exist, we're public servants, and we're here to serve the public. And so at its very basic level, we need to center ourselves on what can we do for you? And, you know, that's the essence of customer service. What it is that I can do for you to be able to help you out. And so we'll be centering ourselves on that. And then, you know, for us, it's about, you know, inspiring curiosity and connection to build, to foster welcoming and to belonging. That is going to be important for us. We're really, you know, we have a lot of work cut out for us to be able to take this strategy out to the community and to really be able to build off it. I think the most important thing is that everything we do from here on out should be tailored to our strategy. And so the biggest piece is that when we're aligning projects for the year, if they don't rise to the occasion of aligning with our areas of strategic impact, then those will be projects that might fall off the table or might be pushed down, because it's going to be important to tether our work and guide it to our strategic plans. So it was important, when we were sitting in the rooms talking about what this plan would do for us, that we talked about how do we internally focus our teams on driving around the mission, organizing the mission, talking about our work, and relating to the mission. And so that's going to be a tall order, and so it'll take some time to really onboard the staff. And I think you'll see more benefits of the strategic plan probably in year two than year one, just because it takes a while to get everybody, you know, onto this, you know, same nomenclature, for instance. And how does that, like, one of the questions we got when we did a training for our managers and supervisors, our supervisors or managers a couple of weeks ago was, well, how does this change our work? The answer was zero. It doesn't change your work. It changes how you talk about your work, but it doesn't change the very essence of what your work is. And so having said that, the couple of changes we made are really just basically grammatical changes here and there. We added a couple charts for ease of understanding, and we had a couple suggestions from leadership team members about a couple of different sections and making the language more clear. And those were the only changes from last month, but we felt like we shopped this plan enough with the board and leadership and staff, and we're feel like we're at a place to ask the board of trustees to approve the strategic plan. But before we do that, I'd like to entertain any questions from the board about the strategy, and myself and our leadership team can answer those.
I don't know that we, well, maybe somebody has a question, but I'm interested in, you know, this process and just hearing from each of you about what struck you about the process, or what you're most excited about, or, you know, as we walk away this evening, what are you most proud about that you see in here? So I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, thanks, Stephanie. I think one of the things that struck me was how much the organization really put their money where their mouth was as far as inclusion throughout this whole process. And I think that inclusion, when I first joined, you know, I think I joined the foundation first, hearing, I think for a lot of other organizations, inclusion is aspirational. I really felt that this process of, you know, composing the strategic plan was really inclusive. I felt like I was heard. I felt that there was every effort to collaborate and include all the different organizations that really drive this system. So I think that's what I was really impressed with, and, you know, with, and just the beauty and the modern design that brought it all together, and the attention that the team put into, you know, bringing in the right words. I just thought it was really well-done. I think this was a kind of process that other organizations, other organizations would struggle with to be this collaborative and to come out with a document this good and a document that inspires. When I thought about the strategic plan initially, I thought about the strategic plan being something that if, for an employee, you know, if I were an employee in an organization, I would want to look at the strategic plan, maybe I'm a little off course, maybe a little bit burned out, and I want to remind myself of why I'm here. And I think this is a really good document that does that. So I think that's the thing that strikes me the most, is that, you know, the organization had talked a lot about wanting to be inclusive and being driven by inclusion, and they, you really followed through on that with this process. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. I think you spoke, just what I was thinking, but I think you spoke it much better. I come from a union background, and inclusion, involving staff and so on, has been especially important. And that's certainly been done here, and of course, everybody else, too. I think everybody's had a chance to pitch in on this and get their thoughts going. So, yeah, I agree totally.
Thank you, Eric.
I just want to say, it feels like the first time we looked at this, thinking back, I felt like it was 100 pages long and very, very scattered. So to see the finished product is very refreshing and telling about how we can accomplish things. I appreciate the values in here. I think, similar to what Eric said, being able to go back and knowing what your values are and that everybody agreed upon those, I think that's where I like to see people be tethered to. And then finally, it's a good document to, when you're making budget decisions, I know we don't have a, you know, expansive budget to work with and have all these financial opportunities. I think it's really good to tie your budget back to what you say that you're going to do, and this is going to be a public document and should drive all the decisions to the extent that there is any latitude with making budgetary decisions. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Gina?
To build on both of the Eric's, inclusion really is that key word there. Many of us served on many boards, and just speaking for myself, this is a hands-on board where you actually have to get in and do the work. Gina said something December 8th, where she said, you know, I don't want to feel like I'm rubber-stamping the process. And I've never gotten that feeling being a part of this board. And I think that's really powerful. And if you're going to walk the talk, then you have to be able to see that internally for it to show externally. And I think we all feel very inclusive, like we're a part of helping to build, to listen, and to contribute, and just very appreciative and proud of the document that sits here before us tonight.
Thanks, Maron.
I find myself thinking tonight about the one session, it was several, it's been several months ago now, where, and I, well, I guess it would have been retreat before last, so we meet quarterly, and I really love those opportunities when the board gets to be in working sessions with leadership team. And at that point in time, we were working through a document that was fairly sprawling, and we couldn't necessarily find the path at the time through there. But I was really struck, and I keep looking at Shannon, partly because she's in my line of sight, but there was such care and intention on part of all of the staff, the leadership team, to make sure that in this process, often in strategic frameworks, we get very externally focused, and we prioritize external stakeholders and external audiences. And I was really, I was really struck even that day about the iterative conversations that were happening, taking into account that external feedback in some respects, but how that would still have meaning in aligning to what was really being driven from inside out. So I hope, I don't think we're in jeopardy of not approving this tonight after all of this work and all of these months, but I hope Yor is proud of this work as certainly I am. I love, it's layered, it's full of nuance, it's got, it's that touchstone to the past in terms of that nostalgic piece we all think about as libraries, but it's also salient in sort of, I think it'll be a great document to help our communities really understand the libraries of today and the many different things that are really within our circle. I love the fact that we just set out that we're going to be accessible, we're going to be collaborative, and we're going to be sustainable, and everything else builds from there. So I'm proud of this work. I hope all of you are proud of this work as well. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan.
Thanks, Stephanie.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big, that's a big, that just feels like a big, I feel like, yes. It just feels like a lovely, Lisa, you came in here saying, there's nothing but good news, and it's all about celebration tonight. That's a big celebration. I really appreciate it and thank that. The next item on the agenda is, we actually, we've looked at this a couple of times. We definitely brought this forward, I think, in October originally, and then really spent last month with sort of a larger kind of working through both the proposed policy and the guidelines. And then even in that conversation last month, we realized, you know, we really needed to stop and go back and further invite input from our stakeholders. So the document we have tonight that reflects the naming board policy has, is different even from the last time we saw it, in part because while we were noting that we have fundraising partners, building owners, and stakeholders, and the partnership with the foundation, I think with the feedback we really got from the conversation that Eric had, and I know, Eric, you also then went back to the Bainbridge Public Library, is that we made a further revision to note that while the naming policy is really within the purview, it is a board decision, it is a board policy, we recognize that, first of all, these are big, big decisions, and we're not going to get very many times to make these decisions. So mostly what we wanted to do is to create the context for how we were going to make that decision, and the guidelines in terms of the things we might want to think about, while recognizing that we couldn't really put hard-line constraints in because we want this policy to last and to be relevant going forward. And going further forward, our opportunities, our opportunities will be different. And so this was more about creating a document about how we would go through the process of discerning and entertaining naming, you know, a proposed naming for one of our branches, or even with the foundation and different building projects internally. Eric, I don't know, do you want to, do you want to share with the board the feedback you got from Bainbridge?
Yeah, I did get feedback from BPL. I sent them some of the documentation that we're going to go over tonight. I did get a response. It wasn't in any official capacity, not any sort of official comment from BPL, but the comment that I got was that it was a very thoughtful and inclusive approach to, you know, difficult decision. We just talked about the strategic plan and all of the partners that we're involved with, right, and all the collaboration that needs to happen, and the importance of inclusion in our own values. And so I think it was, it was good that we had that pause last month that you brought up, Eric, to make sure that we reached out to our partners and let them know. So I think this is, you know, this just continues to emphasize the importance of collaborating and making sure that, you know, ultimately, it's still the decision of, you know, the board of trustees in conjunction with the library director and the foundation, but there's always an opportunity to be a good partner. So I think it was, it was a great exercise. It was, it was great to reach out to them and give them the chance to give feedback, and that's, you know, that's, I attend BPL meetings anytime that I can. And so I think that just emphasizes the importance, and frankly, the difficulty sometimes of not always being able to make everybody happy, but trying to be the best partner that we can.
Yeah, I attended the board meeting at Friends of the Manchester Library, and they hadn't realized that there was a naming policy, and so it was the first presentation to them. And the first reaction was, well, it's our building, how come they get to name it, of course. But anyway, we went over it, and they're okay with it. So I really appreciate the month delay, and it really helped. And I guess maybe it's good that you had a chance, too. So, anyway, I'm good with it. They're good with it, so.
Further comments, questions?
And the guidelines, there's just a couple of formatting things, but they're not substantive. So you'll see them when you scroll through again. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks for pointing it out.
Thank you, Gina. If there's no other questions or items of points of discussion, I'll hear a motion on approving the naming board policy and related guidelines.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Eric.
Second.
I love how you just bring it down the line. Any further considerations or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Another big piece of work, December's just a month where you kind of get to close out shop, right, as you go through. So, thank you. Next is new business, and last month, we actually tagged, this seems a little awkward, doesn't it, Eric, a bit? We tagged Eric to serve as the nominating committee. It's going to seem a little weird because he's, because he's really put in place to be the next president, but we're following a pattern that we have previously set, that vice chair, pending, unless there's a unique circumstance, vice chair sort of automatically moves in, vice president moves into the position of president. And then, Eric, do you want to take it from there? I just didn't want people to think, why is he putting himself as president?
Well, thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, the nominating committee, looking Yeah, the, with the nominating committee, looking to, I will be serving as president, continuing from my current role as vice president, moving into president, and Gina Steiner serving as vice president. We also discussed potential committee changes. We looked at me continuing with the finance committee along with Eric Sisney, Gina and Marwan continuing with long-range strategic planning, and Stephanie continuing with policy. It's been really great to see Stephanie just crank out all of these great policies. We've been at the core of all of it. So, well, you're, you're really good at them, so thank you for driving that. And so that's really what we've come to. I think everybody's, everybody's preferences have been heard, and hopefully, everybody is where they want to be with the, with the nominating committee. So there is a motion to approve, we need a motion to approve the slate of officers. I think that is separate from the committee. The committees are just, the committees themselves are just appointed. So the motion is to approve the slate of officers as presented, with me serving as president and Gina serving as vice president. Is there a motion to approve the nominating committee?
I will make that motion.[677.11][677.11](LAUGHING).
I will second that.
Oh, am I supposed to do that? Actually, you're supposed to do it.
No, I'm just laughing. Smooth-running meeting because they're just doing their jobs, don't at the end, which is great. We have a motion, we have a second. I don't think anybody's going to contest this, so I'm going to assume all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. I was in foundation mode, I just kept going, so.
Just to move around. Next item is the, on the agenda, is the preliminary 2024 operating budget. And this is the same budget as it was presented last month in public hearing, and there have been no changes, correct, Dan?
That is correct. Just as further background, this is resolution number two as it relates to the budget. Last month, the board passed a resolution related to property tax revenue and directing the county to collect on our behalf. Along with that, you got to see the first draft of this budget, which has not changed. In December, we do a resolution adopting the budget, and in January, we do another resolution adopting the capital budget for 2024. At the end of this year, we'll sweep all the balances left over, and those will go to fund any future capital projects, and we'll give you a list of capital projects we'd like to complete in 2024 at NUSC must meeting. So there's another resolution coming your way next month.
We're getting good at them.[776.82][776.82](LAUGHING). Good, thank you, Dan. So the preliminary budget that is the subject of resolution 202308 really is approving a budget that includes in total 2.16%. It's not a very big margin of increase. I think that's one of, certainly one of the challenges. We have given the cap around our largest source of support. But with this, I will hear a motion to approve, unless there's any questions. Are there any questions, further questions about this budget that we're moving? Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to approve resolution 202308.
I so move.
I second.
We're just going to let you continue to do the heavy lifting. Further comments or conversation? You're just getting ready. All in favor of approving resolution 202308, which is the adoption of Kitsap County Rural Library District's 2024 operating budget, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Are they, are... We're good, yeah. I wondered why they were two separate actions, but we're good. Okay. Next on, under new business, is another, another resolution. And really, Mike, do you want, it looks like your name's attached to this in terms of giving some further context?
My name is attached to this. Are, are you ready for a preliminary report?
We're ready.
Okay, well, good evening, board members. This is, this item before you this evening is an annual event for us, but because this year's numbers seem a little bit different, I felt like it was important to kind of preface the approval request of the resolution with some preliminary comments. So each year, previous to 2023, we have focused on two groups of patrons that have been deleted from our database on an annual, on an annual basis. The first group is patrons who've had no activity on their account for the previous three years and have no fines associated with their accounts. And this is just a cursory cleanup of the database that we do, and it does not usually require any notification to the board or anything. It's just an annual thing that we do. Additional to that, we have the annual cleanup associated with patrons that have no activity on their account for the previous seven years, but do have some fines associated with those accounts. Those have been considered uncollectible fines and have been, those patrons and the, and the fines associated with those patrons are brought to the board on an annual basis to what we have previously called writing off bad debt. We have changed the name this year to more appropriately suit what it actually is, so thank you, Dan, for giving me the update to that language. We're not actually writing off bad debt because we don't carry these fines as debt on the books. So we are canceling uncollectible fees, as we're, as we're now calling it. So, however, another group that has been tracked in our database is the list of patrons that owe more than $50 on their account and have been referred to our collection agency. This group has never been deleted from our, from our database, even with no activity on their account, regardless of how long it's been. So at the September board meeting this year, the board voted to remove the collections referral fee from all of our patrons' accounts, which in essence unlocked these accounts for deletion. So while we had all these accounts that were no activity whatsoever for seven years or more in many cases, and were in our collection system, we were not able to delete them because they were referred to collections. So now with your actions in September, we've unlocked those accounts. And what you have before you this evening, resolution 2023-09, will cancel this sort of bubble year that we see, a total of $335,045.65 in uncollectible fees, and authorize the library to delete 4,170 patron records with no activity over the last seven years associated with these uncollectible fees. So what we're seeing is, is kind of a inordinate bump where we have more than 10 years of patrons that have been in collections but have not been deleted, or, one of the terms we use is purge, purged from our database. So this action this evening represents kind of a true up or a correction to our patron database because of the one-time action of removing them from our collection system. So hopefully, that makes sense. I have all kinds of numbers from my staff that make very, very little sense, but I've tried to kind of bring that down to those basic numbers that we're looking at and asking for authorization on. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
I'm not sure, I mean, I think it's, so we're essentially, but maybe we're not wholly fine-free. I mean, the library is currently fine-free, or at least for some things. I understand this goes back, this is reaching back prior to a time.
It's reaching back, but we, we still do assign, and Shannon can correct me on this, or Jason can, I believe we still assign fees for damages and lost items. So there's no overdue fees.
Okay.
Associated with patron accounts, but lost items and damaged items are still charged to patron accounts.
Yeah, and that's correct. We don't assign fines for overdue materials, it's just for replacement costs of materials that are never returned and/or are damaged or lost. And so while technically, the library does not have fines, the library has fees associated with those materials, as I just described.
Anybody else have a question about this?
I have a question. My question is, do we have any idea who these 4170 folks are? Are they deceased, or are they folks that have moved on?
It can be any number of, of conditions. And specifically, I do not know because we don't delve into patron records. We only know that they're, in our ILS system, there is no record of activity on those accounts. So it, there could be any explanation. It could be, for example, just no longer, they moved out of the area. We see a lot of transient population with our military personnel who stay in the area. They may, family members may get patron accounts established, and then they move to, they relocate to a different assignment. These could be former student accounts, they've aged out of the system, and, and they no longer use their, or they age out of the school system and into a regular account, and it never gets used. Any number of explanations, and we don't have those specific statistics.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Eric, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve a resolution 2023/09.
Second there.
I'm smiling because I'm reminding, don't sit in the end chair. So, any, we've got a motion and a second. Any further conversation, question? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of approving resolution 202309, providing the authorization for the Kitsap County Rural Library District, DBA, Kitsap Regional Library, to cancel $335,045.65 in uncollectible fees that's occurring from 4,170 inactive patron accounts? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Final item under new business, item number 10.5, which is formal approval of resolution 2023-10, which would essentially rename the downtown Bremerton branch of the Kitsap Rural Library District to be known as the Martin Luther King Jr. branch. Jason, do you want to note the, the clarification we made today, I think?
Yeah, so per the naming policy, for honorific purposes, and in effort also for findability of locations, we aim to name branches after their cities that they're in. So in honorific moves like this, we would retain the name of the city with the added name of the individual that we're seeking to honor, provided that that name is one that exemplifies the, the mission, vision, values of a library. And so that's where we're at. In terms of this particular resolution, so obviously, we didn't bury the lead here. We talked about this last month in my board report. Lisa very eloquently gave a presentation on the history of this illustrious library, but I'll just dig into a little more. And so we're set to rename the library, the downtown Bremerton Library in honor of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And so we've canvassed the archives for months, really, when this was first brought to my attention by Jeannie some months ago, and then Shannon, and then I talked to Lisa about it, and I've talked to, you know, numerous committee, community members over the almost two years I've been here about the history of this library and the efforts in the past to rename the building. So just really want to lay the context for this didn't sort of, you know, pop out of thin air. This has been some, you know, deep history for this particular library. And so we've canvassed the archives and gotten that information from 1999, you know, 25 years ago. And so you've heard from Lisa, Lisa about the rich history of the downtown Bremerton branch, and all about the patrons and the community who support it. And so from what we've ascertained in 1990, roughly 1997, the effort started to really shed some light on the importance of this, this particular city building, and the efforts to rename it really started probably even before that. But there was a lot of traction around that time, and support from the library under previous library director Ellen Newberg's leadership and the then Board of Trustees actually supported the city of Bremerton in getting the building renamed. And so the building itself has already been named after Dr. Martin Luther King. So in order to be consistent with that, and obviously, the most saliently, it's, it's all about the, the honor that we can bestow on that facility because of who it serves. And we feel like it fully represents the values of the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King. And so, you know, in 1999, that ceremony happened with the NAACP's support, and the renaming, again, was supported by the library and the Board of Trustees. So in an effort to shed light on our mission as a whole, and given the rich history of the, the library and its service to the underserved, and the values exemplified by Dr. King, the library's mission to support the public and to support its stakeholders in the community and staff, the library seeks to bestow further honor upon this historic edifice, which is this WPA, you know, classic building that we all love and adore, by renaming the downtown Bremerton branch to the Bremerton hyphen Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. branch. So we now become before the Board of Trustees to make this renaming official, and so we would ask that the board pass resolution 2023-10, renaming the downtown Bremerton branch of the Kitsap Rural Library District to the Martin Luther King, again, to the Bremerton hyphen Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. branch. That's it.
That was mouthful, huh?
It was.
Yeah.
And, and available for any questions?
Yeah.
Obviously.
No questions?
No question, just, just a comment. When I first came on to the board and was entertaining, coming into this position, many leaders in the community came to me and said that this was really important for them, that this library be known as the ML King Library, and that it wasn't. And so that was my main objective, you know, kind of coming off, my, my chief thing to do. And when I came on and, you know, met Jason and began to work with the staff, what I realized was, well, that was already well underway, and, you know, this, this ship is under great stewardship. And so I really didn't have to do much, except for just cheerlead and just watch the tremendous progress over the, you know, last year or so. So just very appreciative to see the follow-through of this. And I can speak for many of the community members that feel the exact same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it really, it feels like historical restoration in so many, in so many ways, and timely, just in terms of the anniversary, and then the reopening of the downtown Bremerton facility and whatever. So I'll hear a, you can't make a motion, right, Jason? Oh, you're, you're, okay, you're getting the honors, Marwan, if you'd like to make a motion.
I motion, a resolution.
I move.
For the 2023-10 authorization for the Kitsap County Rural Library District to rename the downtown Bremerton branch location to Bremerton hyphen Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. branch location.
I second the motion.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of approving resolution 2023-10 as moved in second, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Last item on our agenda this evening is to make note of our next regular board meeting, which will take place on Tuesday, January 23rd, in this facility. I'm going to just hand this over to you to go ahead and close this out, Eric. It's just been, oh, you want the other piece too?
Yeah.
We're, I think as we, I, it just feels like a celebration this evening in December, and to close out just really a tremendous year of work on behalf of the staff, and we're just grateful to the staff and the leadership, and really also the tremendous amount of public support this is, that this library gets. So I'm feeling grateful as we move into the, the holidays and the new year, so thank you.
And before I, before I swing the gavel here, I want to thank Stephanie for her leadership in all of these board meetings, and really challenging us to, to be more than just, to contribute our, our true capabilities, I think, and really challenging us to bring our best, and to give you what we can from our own experiences to make the library as good as we possibly can, and support you and support the staff. So I want to thank Stephanie for her, for her leadership.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I could chime in, I really want to thank Stephanie, first and foremost. We've been on weekly calls for the last two years that will sadly come to a close.
I'm gonna miss those.
I'm gonna miss them too. And, and, and full disclosure to everybody, the last week was the first week I didn't make the call because it was just swamped with stuff and didn't even realize it was Wednesday. But having said that, I really want to thank the Board of Trustees, the leadership team especially, because they have been my closest partners in this work for the last two years. But without this, this particular community here, I would not have been successful. Obviously, our staff is the face of all of that, looking at one of them here in our community, which is here. But it's really been a challenging year. So just my reflections on this year as a whole are that, you know, we accomplished a great deal by working together. And I think that was really emblematic in the policies that we passed tonight and the process that we were engaged in doing that. And it takes, you know, real process to make things work. And so I think for me also, it's a learning opportunity to understand that sometimes you have to, you know, go slow to go fast, you know, and sometimes you gotta take it all back. And, and so really learning a lot from this group of leaders. They're helping, helping me to grow and this board is helping me to grow. And just really, you know, gauging your rich experience on this community and how to get things done and how to really, you know, be successful. And I appreciate your mentorship, all of you, for that. And I hope to be better next year. And I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays and to especially our brilliant staff out there who are, know are tuning in, our community, our union partners from WPA and, and everybody, happy holidays. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Meeting adjourned.